Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And do we call a roll call? You know, it's been about a year since I had my... Okay, so Chair, if we're gonna have a roll call, please.
I'll call for you. Um, Matonia Naylor?
Yes, President.
Denise Hurst?
President.
And Maria Perez.
Can you mute it, Maria?
Thank you. Just wave at us, we'll know that you're there.
I'm muted.
Wonderful. So, we have, uh, we'll go right directly to the agenda. And it looks like we are going to be discussing one item and then voting. Uh, to recommend to the full school committee that it approve the revisions to the student computer take-home policy. So, I believe I will give it over to Paul to talk about those changes. And then see if anybody has any questions. I know that I definitely have a few.
Yeah, if I could just frame it quick and then go to Paul. So, it's clear, uh, you know, during this COVID-19 crisis, we were in a different place than most other school districts. We had purchased the laptops, but we hadn't gone completely take-home. Obviously, that had to change during the crisis. And we delivered a lot of laptops home. We had, we had some distributed at the school. Clearly, where we're at now is a very different place relative to take-home. And it's clear we need to be all take-home on the laptops, especially as we move forward. And with our policy, we had gone, when we first went to one-to-one laptops, we were collecting insurance because we didn't have any replacements. For the last few years, we've been decommissioning, if you will, 25% of our fleet of laptops. We have a lot of spare computers in that, um, that have come offline that we could use as replacements for students who lose one. So, we no longer need the insurance to make the policy work. So, we have a proposal for you tonight that Paul's gonna take us through. I just wanted to frame the larger issue for you. That makes sense now, that didn't make sense when we put the insurance into place some years back. So, Paul, if you can run with it and walk us through and go over everything.
Sure. And I do have a brief set of slides I'll share with you just to provide the information. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Great. So, just to go back, um, in history a little bit, we, we started with take-home, um, in the 2016, 2017 school year with five schools piloting in the spring semester. It's expanded, uh, over the school year since then, so the 17, 18, 18, 19. So, in the 18, 19 school year, which was the most recent full year, right before this year, um, we had about 4,800 laptops taken home nightly and collected 96,000 in take-home fees to purchase the insurance. Because the, the, the insurance policies weren't precisely $20, um, we ended up, the cost of insurance was about $72,000. In that year, so in the school year 2018, 2019, we had 47 laptops that were confirmed lost or stolen. So, that was a 1% rate of theft and loss, which we were pretty happy with. Obviously, you know, we have concerns in this current situation that we may see a little bit higher number. But, so, for this school year, for the 1920 school year, we start, we, prior to March 13th, so prior to school closing, uh, we had 6,000 laptops being taken home nightly. I think that was across about six, 15 or 16 schools. So, as you all know, I think we've talked, we've talked about this at a previous school committee meeting, um, we distributed about 10,500 laptops in early April, uh, through the pickup and delivery process. We did at the time suspend the laptop fee, uh, on the basis of the coronavirus emergency. Uh, and so, since the closure, this is a good news story. Since the closure on March 13th, 16,651 SPF-issued student laptops have been logged into by students, which is pretty close to all of them that we distributed. And we've also continued a delivery process with thanks to Vanpool for, for helping us out with that, where about 100 inoperable laptops have been replaced via delivery since mid-April. So, that's a process where twice a week a van goes out when we get a report from a school that a laptop, or from, I'm sorry, from a student, I should say, from a family, that a laptop's not working and we haven't been able to fix it remotely. Uh, we've been delivering replacements. And you can see, we've also, I think you, you all know this as well, trying to do what we can to bridge the gap relative to the internet for families who don't have internet at home and certainly have taken advantage of some, uh, opportunities that Comcast has made free, as well as, uh, investing in some hotspots for students for whom the Comcast solutions are not sufficient. So, that brings us to, uh, this conversation about the take-home fee. So, the, the, these are some bullets that are just around the, the why. And the superintendent spoke to these. We certainly know that all students at this point need lap, access to a laptop at school and home, given the, the instructional models we're anticipating for the fall. So far, prior to coronavirus, the, um, about 10, for somewhere between 5 and 10% of families in a school that was offering take-home were declining to take advantage of it. Um, and some percentage of them, that was because of the fee. And so, in a situation where students really have to have a laptop in order to be able to do the work we're asking them to do, that, that's a consideration, you know, maintaining the fee. We're gonna have that subset of families who are still saying they, they won't pay it or can't pay it. Schools also, I should say, spent significant time collecting and tracking take-home fees. And procuring laptop insurance has been challenging. We've done it, but it's been challenging largely because the insurers, they want a precise count of the laptops, uh, that we're insuring. But because we've been slow, we were slowly rolling up to our take-home process, um, it was hard at the start of the year to give them an exact number of how many laptops were gonna be going home over that year. And then the point the superintendent made, I think, is most important, so it's here in bold. Because we replaced 25% of our laptops annually, we are basically taking, um, around 5,000 laptops out of, out of regular rotation. Now, we keep them, and we've been keeping them because we need loaners, we need spares, right? Laptops break, they go, they, you know, we do have some theft and loss. And so, if a student's laptop goes missing or a student, um, who's taking it home forgets to charge it, they might need a laptop to use for the day at school. So, we keep those laptops. But we have a lot of them that go out of service each year. And, um, the last point here is just that this is really around maintaining take-home generally, that our laptops that are individually assigned have pretty consistently experienced less damage than laptops that are shared among multiple students, which isn't, isn't probably super surprising. So, that brings us to the policy. So, we do have a, a laptop take-home policy that was adopted several years ago, around the, I think in that 2016, 17 school year when we first piloted, uh, the, the take-home in the five schools. And so, oh, sorry, before I get to the changes to the policy, sorry. Just to explain, I wanted to provide a little more explanation for how this will work with the excess inventory. So, without devices, um, or sorry, without insurance, what we would do is we would use the five, six, and seven-year-old devices. And a student whose laptop is lost or stolen would have to use make-do with one of the five, six, or seven-year-old devices. So, what we're calling surplus devices. And because we remove about 5,000 devices per year from our one-to-one, we, we know, some are, some of those are not gonna be serviceable, right? A laptop that's been in use for four years. So, some of those devices that hit their fifth year of life really aren't workable. But what my team does is the ones that they can't service, um, or can't be, can't be repaired, they're actually hanging on to those and then using them as parts to keep the other ones running. And so, even if we assume a, a certain percentage of our devices coming out, out of service after the fourth year aren't, can't continue to work, we think we should have at least 7,000 five- and six-year-old devices that we can keep in working condition per year. And so, that would be what we would do instead of insurance, is we would rely on that complement of five- and six-year-old devices to provide laptops to the students to, for whatever reason, the laptop that was assigned to them is no longer available. That could be, I, I said theft and loss, it could also be damage that is not repairable. That could result in the need to provide them with one of the five- or six-year-old devices. And now, sorry, then now moving to the actual policy. The recommendations, and I believe you all sent a red-lined copy, um, but I can, and then I can actually share that on the screen a, after I finish the slides, if that would be helpful. The primary change is to eliminate the $20 take-home fee. So, that was an annual fee, um, that was payable that we were using to buy the insurance. A couple other, uh, less significant changes, just in terms of the language of the policy, is that, uh, we have a student-parent guardian consent. The policy would maintain that requirement. And we would just start folding that in. Every year, we send home a signature packet at the start of the year with every family, because there's a number of forms that need to be completed at the start of every year. We would just include that with the signature packet because we're asking all students to take a laptop home. And generally speaking, we have really good return rate on those signature packets. And it's a, it's a pretty consistent process every year where those go home. Um, and then the, the other change, uh, it's reflected in the policy. It's not a significant change to the policy, but we are gonna start, regardless of what school a student is assigned to, once they're assigned a laptop, that will remain their laptop for the, for the next four years. And so, we're shifting away from when a student changes school, they have to get a new laptop, which we think will be helpful in terms of, it'll be helpful to the student because they can just take the, if they move schools, they can just take the laptop they've been using with them. But we also think it will increase the incentive that students have to take good care of the device, knowing that it's their device for four years. The last thing in here is not a change to the policy. I just wanted to include it as a reminder of what our current policy language is. And so, our current policy language is that if a student's device is lost, stolen, or damaged, uh, the school may provide a surplus device, and that device can be taken home at the discretion of the school. If it happens a second time in the same academic year, then that student can use a surplus device in school, but they can't take it home again if a second one. And we've had, I don't think any cases of a student having a lost, stolen, or damaged device twice in one school year. The reason for the first bullet, for allowing the school to have discretion to allow a second device to be taken home is because we have had a couple of circumstances where a student's, uh, SPF-issued laptop was destroyed in a fire. And obviously, that's not, it's through no fault of the student. And so, we wanted principals at schools to have some discretion in cases like that to allow a student to take a second device home. So, it's not required of schools to allow a second device so they can use their judgment based on the particular circumstance. So, that's not, again, that's, and the other thing you'll see in the red-lined version is there are some, some wording changes that are just, um, you know, some kind of language cleanup. But these are the, these three bullets really are the primary changes in the policy. And I can stop sharing. Would it be, would you like me to, to share on the screen the, the red-lined version of the policy?
I do, I do have a copy in mind, but I think it'd be helpful for everyone if you pulled it up. So, Paul, I have a question around this document. And I appreciate your summary of the, um, of the policy. And I'm really happy about some of the changes just because these are things that we've talked about in the past that we thought might be good in general to do. So, it's nice to be able to use this platform to, to kind of move it forward. Um, however, I had a question around the first bullet where, um, I wanted to know if students are issued an older model currently? That, um, it talks about the four years, but based on what you just summarized, I'm assuming that they would then transition into a new device, but I just want to clarify on that.
Yeah, that's a good question. So, the old device would go offline after four years and they get a new device.
Okay.
Yes.
One quarter of the fleet will go offline, this year even. So, if that student's device was four years old, that'll go offline and they'll be one of the students that are issued a new device.
Okay, great, great. And then, the second bullet, I wanted to find out. I know that, um, even though students have one-to-one, I know from personal observation that students still would rather gravitate towards their own iPads or their cellphones because they knew that they could still access the apps for their schools through that. And so, I observed a lot of families and students having the difficulty with being completely in laptops because it's, it's different, even though it's the same apps. And so, myself, you know, trying to, as a parent, would say, "No, you're getting off of your phone and you're gonna be on your laptop. That way, I know you're doing your work and I can see it better." And so, I wonder if there's an option for us to add some type of tutorial or something for families and students? Um, not only to explain how to get into the computer and everything. I know we had a, a write-up, but I think that having a video would be really helpful as well for those people that just learn better by seeing it visually, how to go in and add and get into the computer, but then also what those different software, um, are, or those apps that kids have to access, like Teams and some of the other ones, I can't remember the names of right now. But I know that a lot of times when, uh, we were in parent conversations, like with the schools, they would say, "Well, go to Teams and go here and go there." And we're looking at the kids like, "Can you tell me how to get there? Because I don't know." And, and so, I just wanted, I don't know if that will go in this particular part of the policy, but I wanted to just, you know, say that on behalf of, of a lot of folks that really, that was their biggest challenge. Not necessarily not wanting the computers, but not understanding how to navigate on the platform.
Yeah, we did receive a lot of, we, a lot of feedback from families who were struggling to make use of the technology. And I think it was not, um, I mean, it was, it was a quick change, right? And so, it was not something we had, um, fully anticipated, but also, you know, it's challenging once you go immediately to remote. And then, supporting families who are struggling with technology access without using technology to support them proved to be very challenging. What I can say is we do, we have plans in place. Well, we're working on planning for, there's a lot of challenges around social distance, but our goal is to offer family tech orientations for the entire month of August. And we'd like to offer those in multiple languages. And that would be exactly what you're talking about. That would be the very basics, right? So, using the computer, connecting the computer to the internet, but also how to log into the, the software and applications that are predominantly in use in the Springfield Public Schools. And, and probably most importantly, in those tech orientations, our goal is to cover, uh, what do you do if you need help? So, we want to make sure we, we include that. So, the hope is to do those in person with appropriate precaution and social distancing in the month of August so that we can make that available to families for whom, because we, we have heard a lot that it's been a struggle.
And I still suggest doing, you know, when you have those in person, to still record for those families because they are able to access mostly through their phones or iPads or whatever device as well. So, even if they don't know how to get onto the device on the computer platform, accessing the links, I think a lot of folks still have access through their data on their phone to be able to go on YouTube or something like that. So, I would highly encourage that aspect.
We can definitely record those, for sure. And we do, we do have some videos that Azelle has been great about helping us get them out there on the social media. But we could certainly, I totally agree, the more we can do with video, the better.
Absolutely, and I have one more question. Um, I do know that, that the teachers have a way to be able to track what students are doing in their activity while they're on their computers, but parents don't have a way to do that when they're at home? Is that, is, is that software, um, able to be accessed remotely? Or where teachers can still track what the kids are doing? Or is there some other way that parents can track what their kids are doing and know that they're not on YouTube or something else that is not what they're supposed to be doing when they're supposed to be doing classwork?
Um, yes, we, so we have the software, we have, we have software called Dino, which is what our teachers use to monitor student activity on the computers. And that is available remotely. So, when, when students are working from home, teachers are still able to monitor, um, in a couple ways. They can sort of actually live-monitor what's on a student's screen, but they also can get a history of what applications or websites students have been accessing. And teachers actually also with that software have the ability to block things. So, they can make it so, if they know a particular student is, um, maybe spending more time on YouTube, then it's helpful, they can actually block YouTube. I don't have a great answer for you with respect to, it's not a piece of software we have the ability to make available to parents. So, I don't know that we have an ability to provide that same kind of opportunity for parents, but it's certainly something I'm willing to look into.
Thank you. So, that concludes my questions that I have at this point. Um, does anyone else have any questions for Paul or Superintendent Ward?
Yes, I do. Oh, um, one of the, when you do look at the model or putting the instructions together, I have received many calls from parents that have language barrier. Please, I recommend that they be put in Spanish so they could able to understand. I know that, um, Neil North, um, Josiah has been great with his youth and following up with the instructions. But, um, like myself included, I'm not that technology savvy. So, please, um, include them because that's one of the things that I've been hearing from the parents in terms of the instructions.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that, because we, we do, the directions we put out for how to access our various tools, we did put, we did do an English and Spanish. We did not get them into every language that, that we have, um, in the district. We're still working on that piece. The other one that we've struggled with is some of the videos that I was speaking about. We've created those videos to, um, access, uh, you know, how to log into Microsoft Teams or how to connect to Wi-Fi. We have those videos, but, and I do actually have a member of my staff who's actively working on, um, essentially adding voiceover to those in Spanish. But that took us much longer than I would have liked to get done.
Yeah, sorry. And the other question I had, um, so let's say we have about four students, different students, and this is the other complication. It's only one, um, computer that's taken home. How do, what's the instruction within that area, having four students in the house or more?
We did, and this may not have gotten, we tried to message, this is the best we could, through the schools, to the, to families. But we, when we distributed the laptops at the beginning of April, we, we said every student was eligible for a laptop. So, in, in a family with four students, they should have been able to receive four laptops. Um, I know that I have heard about some exceptions to that, but that was what we, that was our intent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Something other than that occur, if they contacted the school, we could get those other laptops out to them.
Yep.
I have a question too around the ability to have captions and stuff like that in the software. I know that Zoom has a very difficult way to have that feature shown. I know Google Meetup has it very easily. Um, does Teams and those other platforms that kids utilize, do they have the option to have captions that they could read along and, and possibly in their own language?
Yeah, so some of the tools do and some don't. I'd have to get, I think Teams has some elements of that. I'd have to get back to you on which specific parts of Teams have that. I know that Microsoft, as a platform, has added over the last three years a tremendous number of accessibility tools. So, one of the things we're thinking about as we think about the fall, I'll give an example. Teachers can, uh, record themselves doing a talking over a PowerPoint, right? So, within PowerPoint, they can record their voice while moving through a series of PowerPoint slides and have it automatically translate and, and add captions, um, as they're doing that. So, there are a lot of accessibility tools like that. So, one of the, one of the things we need to work through is, is obviously training our staff to use all of those tools. So, so I can certainly, you know, get more detail in terms of which specific tools have what functions. Another one, for example, is Unified Classroom, which is what we use as our learning management system, has, uh, things like a built-in screen reader. Um, I'd have to get back to you on whether it has built-in translation.
Thank you, that's helpful. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yes, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair. So, Paul, to Maria's point, where do those videos get posted? Are they on the school website or, because are they on our general public website?
Yeah, so, yes, I think on the, on the remote learning page, um, that Azelle had configured on our website. Right at the top, there's a, some language about getting help. And there's a link, and that links to a page where all of the videos have been posted. I also do think that, that Azelle posted, um, videos as we produce them to the district's Facebook and Twitter pages.
And the, considering, and I know that no concrete decisions, but there are thoughts about what might happen for the fall or even for summer learning. Do we have any videos around how parents, um, or families can learn about Zoom and Google Meets or Meets and Google Hangouts? I, I say that because not everybody knew what those things were before COVID. And even now, I think I have heard, you know, some parents have just sort of thrown up their hands, whether it's because of the language barrier or just because they're intimidated by the technology. Is there any way to sort of also give instruction about that? Because some of our teachers are utilizing those platforms to have conversations or to meet and convene with their students.
So, yes, and, and definitely our goal is to provide videos on all of the, the platforms that we're using in the district. But one of the things that's gonna change for the coming school year is we had, this was one of our lesson learns through this experience. We have for a long time with, as we moved to one-to-one, as we moved to take-home and digital learning, we've given our teachers a lot of autonomy to use a wide range of tools. And to be totally honest, we didn't fully anticipate how hard that would be for families. And that was, you know, that's one of those hindsight 2020 things. So, for next year, it's not gonna be, it's that way. So, for next year, we're gonna be saying to schools and teachers, "These are the tools we use in the Springfield Public Schools." So, we shouldn't have teachers using as broad a range of tools. But one of the things that'll help us with is being able to produce videos for that narrower range and make sure that we've got the appropriate resources for, for a narrower set of tools.
Right, that's really, that's, that's really great to hear, thank you.
A lot of feedback from parents that that was a problem. So, we put things into place. I think that teacher creativity, as we initially got going, was really important. But then we found that the different tools were hard for parents. So, that's a market correction we're gonna have to make, and Paul's working on it. And we're gonna do the training for staff on the tools we're suggesting because some people were more comfortable with certain tools. So, that's gonna require some staff training, but Paul's playing that as well.
Wonderful. Yes, yes.
Yeah, you know what? Thank you, because what was going on, the report from the community is that certain school had a model when it came to that, another school had another ma, model. And then it was a frustration for the parents because of, of the different models that they were utilizing, that they didn't know how to master the first one. Nevertheless, they had to master a second one or a third one. So, thank you for the acknowledgement.
I, I agree, I agree 110%. As, as a mom with four kids in four different schools, I absolutely get that. And it was difficult, but I do appreciate, um, the, the superintendent and staff really recognizing lessons learned and really looking at what worked and didn't. And then saying, "Okay, how can we make sure that it's improved for next year?" That really says a lot. I mean, this was a first time for everyone. And we didn't expect to do everything perfectly the first time. And I think if we did, if we did have that conversation, and if we did, then we'd be blind, you know? So, I think now having this conversation and saying, "Let's continue to improve", that is definitely something I, I love being a part of. So, thank you, Paul, thank you, Superintendent Ward. And so, if there be no more questions, I think we need a motion to vote to recommend this to the full school, full school committee that it approve the revisions to the student computer take-home policy.
So, moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
It has to be a roll call vote.
Oh.
Has to be a roll call vote under these Zoom meeting rules.
Thank you. You're ready. Ms. Naylor? Yes. Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
And Ms. Perez? Yes. Thank you, Attorney Feltz.
Just as a reminder, this is gonna require two votes because it's a change in the policy. So, we're gonna have to bring it back again one more time.
Yeah, thank you.
May I ask a question? Does that need to hap, will that happen in time for the start of school?
Well, yeah, we're gonna have another meeting before school opens, so we can, we can easily do that happen in place. But yeah, clearly, we know the school committee sentiment tonight, but we have another meeting before school opens.
If you, if you looked at the school committee calendar that's in your packet, I added an extra meeting in mid-August, basically for a working session. What we'll do is we'll have Patty add the second vote to that so that that's done and over with in time.
And Chris, you can still, it's still okay to push out the revisions to the policy ahead of a second vote?
It's been voted once, um, so we could push it out in draft form, sure.
Yeah, because I would think Paul needs to get his staff and, and people messaging this and, you know, for preparation for the fall.
No question.
Attorney Feltz, I have a question. It's related to technology, but I don't know if I'm able to ask a question. I have a question about the Pace Center being online.
So, it's technically not on the agenda, but you have a question about Pace. Maybe you can pose the question and we can, I can, offline, um, outside of the agenda, respond.
Okay, and, um, so should I clarify? Should I verbally ask you or?
You wanna, you wanna give me a call, but if we're gonna, because it's not on the agenda?
Yeah, because it's, it's just a clarifying question, and I just wanna make sure that I'm not.
Sure, happy to help.
Just a suggestion, uh, if you adjourn the meeting, why don't, this is gonna stay because the three meetings are on, and the rest of us can mute ourselves and you two guys can talk right away so it doesn't get lost.
Right, yeah.
I could stay out too because, you know, we've had some conversations about this, so if you want. Or, or you could just email me and I'll get you the information. So, however you want.
It might make some sense if the three of us and, um, you know, we're not in violation of the open meeting law then either.
Okay, all right, so let's do it that way. So, let's adjourn the meeting, um...
And the three of us stay on.
Okay.
Great.
Oh, wait, I forgot what symptoms are both.
I make the motion we adjourn.
Thank you. I make the motion that we adjourn. That's what happens when you're Zoom for, forever, and your brain is trained from technology.
And there does have to be a roll call vote on the vote.
Roll call, yeah.
Chris, the count? So, there needs to be a roll call.
Yeah, you're good. Okay, Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
And Ms. And Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.